Good morning, Lord. We thank you for this opportunity to meet together and learn more about what's going on in our county. We especially appreciate those people that are at home not feeling well. We just ask that you would bless them and heal them, bring them back soon, especially Tom Fulton and Steve Johnston. We just know that their lives are hard right now. And we hope that you'll be there with them along with Ron Stotler. And we ask that you bless this food and our meeting in your name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the liberty over which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rick?
What's some of you guys want to say?
The free is the peace, sweet land of liberty of the ice team. Land where my fathers died, land of life built from pride. From every mountain side, let freedom ring.
And Lord, please excuse us for last second. Bob, guest.
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. Yes, we have a couple of guests today. Frank Burton's got a guest and Spencer's got a guest.
Spencer's not here. Oh, there he is. Hey, Spencer.
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. I'm away from my guest. I'm probably trying to get my run. My guest today is Randy Knox. Randy, you've got to stand up and smile at everybody now.
I did ask Randy, I said, wow, Spencer has a friend. He said, I don't know if he's a sponsor. We like that kind of delineation. Don't be, Randy. Believe me, you don't have to be his man's friend. You do not have to.
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. I guess today for the prototype, it's Eric Albersen. And the application all filled out, go give it to the board on Thursday.
Paperwork for me. Oh, should we do a happy bucks right now, President Lloyd? Or do you have the word you wanted it?
Go ahead.
You sure? Because it's your game. It's your party.
Any more guests, Bob? Nope, that's it.
That was it?
Yep.
I'm standing right here. Let's go with Rick Johnson.
King Lion Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. Can I be no more blue lights right now?
Coke or something, Eric? What is it? Your dog and your pet. Spy balloon. Oh, my goodness. That's a good joke, Rick. Yeah. How about lion way?
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. I'm happy today that my friend James Mossen showed up. He is a member. He doesn't come very often. He was a member a number of years ago. And then he moved down to Mississippi for five or six years. Now he's moved back to Portland. And so hopefully we'll see his smiling face every once in a while now.
And his check cleared. That's the good news. Oh, wait a minute. You pay cash. And look who's here. Everybody be silent. That's true. This is true. No, we don't get to be silent now. Oh, sorry.
King Lion Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. Ken, happy buck. Happy to be back.
Good to see you back, Jim.
Oh, presented me some flowers. Many years ago, there was a fellow club named Bill Lawson formed our coffee group. And he went into the hospital. And the people in the coffee group bought him a bouquet of flowery. And they painted one side black and left the other side floral. And he said, well, if they die, they just turn it around. But yours wasn't like that.
So Jim, I got to do what I tell you. The book is that you were going to give a happy buck for every nurse who passed her retired. We've had some throat clearing going on already. Mr. George Griner.
Thank you, Royal Fisher, Royal Twister. King Lion Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. I've been a lot of happy bucks because one of them is that Jim Reineke back. And I'm reminded of the story that Abe Lincoln told right through the woods. Man to man, he pulled out his gun and said, I swore if I ever saw someone under, it may have shooting. And Lincoln responded, fire away, sir, because if I'm under, then you ain't no longer wish to live. Jim reminds me of that and I feel good to have him here. So there's a happy buck. Saturday, I attended a surprise birthday party for Doug Gravine's wife, Mary Millville. Mary Millville was one of the first people we met. We would love to be a few years ago. Well, fifty-one years ago. And it was at home of Bill and Adele Marshall. Bill has parked out in the back on his basketball court that he has his back there from his coaching days, I guess. So it could be a surprise. And he said, leave the key in the ignition so that I can move it after. I was the extra mile. I asked if the ignition turned on. And Doug was there with his jumper cable getting on the way home. Mary Millville turns eighty and she's still teaching full time. She for the school district, I mean, I teach and work. She tutors teachers to two. I mean to teach. I told her the same thing my son told me at my university party last year. It's not a big deal because eighty is the new seventy-eight.
Hey, John, you know what? You have a happy buck. Yes. You know why? Yesterday, it's the last part for your outboard lover arrived at my desk. You and I are going to have a date this week. I'm not coming over tonight because I'm busy.
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. As you've just heard, Pat Palmer received the last part to the Yamaha bull horse that I have on my fifteen. I hate to say it, but it's fifteen. And it will soon be in the water. And it will be a lot of fish being caught by my grandson and son. Patrick, thank you, my friend.
You got it, buddy. You got it. That's going to be fun to watch that one, just hopefully her little kitten. Mr. Greg Bird.
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. I too was really happy to see Jim come back today. But one thing I do miss is where the hell is your horse?
Is that another balloon joke? Am I just, I'm just missing all? Is that like the horse you rode in? Oh, for when he was in the army, of course. Well, at least I know what to ask at this table. Ask district governors Patterson, which one would you like to go first? Oh, pretty before boring. Awesome.
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. I have something on my phone. I wasn't quite ready. Valentine's Day is not just for lovers. It's also for friends who love each other. Happy Valentine's Day, my friends. This was sent on my Facebook from Tammy Ellen, who happens to be a lion and currently a vice district governor. And I just looked at her information. She actually lived in Longview and went to Longview's Aralom High School at one time. She currently lives in Seala, so I don't know what her maiden name is. But I just thought that was really sweet because it's really true. It's not just for the people you love that you're in love with, like your spouse, but all your good friends. Happy Valentine's.
I like the way she's got to remind me this daily.
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. Extremely happy dollar. We had a very, very successful visitation last night to Kalama Lions. There were thirteen of us represented there. We had a great time. We just about had two more people filled out. I think we may have outnumbered them, but.
Really?
It was a lot of fun. We had a great time. And I was going for our anniversary this year. I was going to book a balloon ride in Arizona, but I'm canceling that.
There we go. Lion Cindy, you're not wearing your heated vest on the snow day. Do you have your fuzzy boots on?
President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. I have some happy dollars. First one is Jim won Vegas money in the Super Bowl yesterday. He really had no chance to lose, and he had money on both teams. Then he wanted to do more bets next year. I also have had a fun project. We made what you call armadillo eggs. For those of you that don't know, you take a jalapeno pepper, stuff it with cream cheese and shredded cheese, and then you roll it in pork sausage, and then you wrap it in bacon, and then you smoke it for a couple of hours. Definitely not low fat, low calorie, but I don't like jalapenos. They was good. Also, we made homemade pretzels. Because like I said, I can do sourdough gluten free. And so we made homemade pretzels. There's only one left out of the sixteen that we had. And we just made this on Saturday. And so the other thing is I'm very happy to see Jim Reineke back here.
Yay. That's why she's not wearing the heated vest. She can't zip it up today. That's why. But we love to see you putting a few pounds on there, Cindy. Lion Mark Couch, what's going on?
My weekly five dollar donation there. President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. Just so you know, I used to be addicted to the hokey pokey, but I turned myself around. Happy dollar, Jim, for one. Someone's cataract surgery was very successful, so that was good. Took a couple of drives down to Happy Valley in Plaquemines to get it done last week. But it was nice to have that, Lloyd. Second happy dollar, like several people said, very happy to see Jim Reineke back. It's nice to see a qualified district, past district governor in our club. So we also do.
Did they qualify or quality?
Quality. Sad dollar, our dog has been under the weather off and on over the last few weeks. And that meant cleaning up puke instead of going to the work party on Friday. So apologies for missing the Friday morning thing. Quote of the week from Anennis, Anna is nin. I used to say Anai is nin, but it's correctly pronounced as Anna is nin. I looked it up. We don't see things as they are. We see them as we are.
And that's why they lost the war, because they don't know how to pronounce their own names.
Lion Anthony Rock. President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. Have twenty-six happy dollars. Today is Melissa and my twenty-sixth wedding anniversary. So we're celebrating all the adventures and everything that life has brought us in these twenty-six years. And anyway, so this is twenty-six dollars for that.
Wow. All right, Reineke, go get your checkbook ready because when your anniversary comes around. Lion Council Chairman Hal.
Thank you, President Lloyd, fellow lions and guests. This is a memory dollar. Somewhere around forty-five, forty-six years ago, I had to call in a furniture store in Longview that was owned by the Rennekeys. It was called Quinley's Furniture. And one day he says to me, Hal, I'd like to get involved in the community. What should I do? And I said, well, you're too old for J.C.'s, that's for sure. And I introduced him to my boss, Terry Kenniston. And all the rest is history. It's wonderful to see you back, Pastor Governor Jim. Oh, you had a joke to go with that, don't you?
Ricardo.
He was the geekiest looking radio salesman you ever saw. He looks like somebody that shipped me in the basement, I didn't care.
Yeah. Thank you for the was, Jim.
Second happy dollar. Many of you may have heard about my sailboat. Engine had broke down in the middle of the Columbia, and I had to sail back in. And Jerry McCormick and Dwayne Smith came down to bail me out. Or sorry, not bail me out, but land the boat. And it was, Jerry, wasn't it one of the windiest nights you could ever remember? Jerry was up there with me hugging that thing, getting that sail down. The engine started yesterday after about a thousand bucks into it right now. So I'm happy about that.
Yeah. Well, President Lloyd, my happy five bucks is the, that was a ten if I could get a change. You guys here are the trash, right? Seriously, we still need a few boat parts, but I'm not taking it out of that. No, what an amazing journey, this whole.
Gee, I need another sailboat. I think another sailboat would be a great idea. Oh, it's going to be more than just, oh, okay, great.
Yeah. Only thing more expensive, I think, is one of those purebred dogs that apparently likes to get cancer or something. I think that's.
No, your second divorce.
Ooh. Whoa. Yes. Yeah, but you want to know something, I? I didn't look at anything like that in my twenties. Anybody else got a happy buck? What have we got going on here? Oh, Spencer's got a scandal. Very nice. Sorry, I'm going to get closer to my food and away from the dessert.
I'll need change for this. Two happy bucks. Got a twenty. Two happy bucks today. It's only eighteen back. The first happy buck, Aster slept nine hours last night. So that's not continuous, but it was close. Thank you. Second happy buck tomorrow. I'll be in Olympia. You'll get me next Tuesday again. I'm sorry to say, but I'll be in Olympia tomorrow with the Association of Washington Cities, dropping off what I call letters to Santa Claus, trying to advocate for our city this year, so.
Don't bring your wallet. They like to empty it out whenever you go there. Says the guy with the bucket of money who's been writing checks to people in the lit. Anything else? That's right. No. President Lloyd, it's up to you now. Yeah, I must be that.
All right, turn this program over to Mark.
Thank you, Lions, for that rousing applause. Have an opportunity today to introduce a fellow member of our club. Many of you, more recent ones, probably don't remember where he was. Active a number of years ago. And I think I saw your number for your badge, which is still back in the back, and you're up in the thirties. So thirty-four, you're not very far off the top of the list there. Rick grew up in Centralia. Graduated from Central Washington University in nineteen seventy-eight with a business degree. The gallery likes that one. Pat and I would prefer Western Washington University, but we'll let that go. Began a, go Vikings. Began a career in banking at Calhoun's Bank in nineteen eighty-two. We crossed paths about in that timeframe when you were a lender and I was working as an appraiser, but.
And your dad was on the board.
And my dad was one of the founders of Calhoun's Bank and was on the board at that time. That's correct. Was CEO of Reynolds Credit Union from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and eight. Retired from Fiber Federal Credit Union in January of two thousand and twenty-two. You had been the, I think SVP stands for Senior Vice President in charge of retail, the chief retail officer. He has three grown children and seven grandsons. Kind of falls along the Claypool line there with all the grandsons and no granddaughters. Please join me in welcoming fellow lion and Calhoun's County Commissioner, Rick Dahl.
Well, thank you. That'll be that. I want to go up and sit here. Yeah, I get too antsy walking around. It's good to see some people. I, it's really good to see Jim. We spent, well, Woody too, we spent a lot of time in coffee. You start talking about cavalry. We actually had a person that was into cavalry, old Bill Egan. And Egan would say, you know, I was in the army until my hearing went. And Jimmy always saying, yeah, he heard the war was coming. So it's good to be here. What I thought, you know, I'm not, I could bore you with a lot of stuff, but I thought I'd touch on a couple of things that we're working on. And then I really just like it to be, you know, just, I'm sure you have some questions or thoughts and share those. I'll, what I will promise you is I'll tell you what I think. You may not like it, but you, but you'll at least know what I think and what I stand on. Couple of programs we're working on right now. And they both revolve around affordable housing. Now, I probably define affordable housing a little different than some. I really am interested in the part where we get people into ownership. Now, we have, when you look at the twenty-one census data, you'll see per capita income is about thirty-three thousand a year. And family income is about sixty-five, right in that area. But if you do, being a mortgage guy, if you do the figures backwards and then you look in a real estate magazine, you quickly learn there's no affordable housing for people to buy in that, in those ranges. So I think we need to concentrate on different things. I've been working with building and planning because I think we need to, one of the big roadblocks is the rules and regs we do at the county level. And a lot of that gets pushed down from the state, but we still have a lot that we add on at the county level and we need to move some of those away. I know our representatives and our senator are working on some of that at the state level. But it really, really hampers. Here's an example of getting in the way. Habitat for Humanity was putting in a deal out in Lexington. And I can't tell you the exact numbers, but part of it was maybe two or three houses and then, you know, four or five, what you call cottage homes. They're about anywhere, they're around six, seven, eight hundred square feet, you know, one bedroom things. Really built for retired folks that want to downsize and stuff. And the county got in the way on that so bad with needed parking spaces and just different, what I would call just dumb stuff, that Habitat abandoned that and just went to homes. Now, unless we're willing to, you know, adjust some of that thinking, it's going to be real hard to get people in homes. So I'm working with building and planning and we got some thoughts that are in legal right now, which always takes, you know, some time. But we want to really break, get the rules trimmed down, especially for accessory blowing units. If you have a place and you want to put a unit in the back for a mother-in-law or whatever you want to do, we need to peel some of those permits back. My suggestion to them is the only permits we would require is if they want to hook up to water or they want a septic. If they want, you know, compost toilet or incinerator, or they want to do different things, we just leave them alone and let them do it. I think you need to get out of the way and let some of those people do it. You know, we have houses in Longview that date back to the twenties and they're still functional. They still do the job. Sometimes we're a little more than enemy. The other thing I'd like to see is us to free up stuff. Has anybody, when you drive up to Chehalis and you get around between Naperville and Chehalis, if you look out to the right hand side, you'll see basically a group of cottage homes up there. There's probably maybe ten to twelve of them. From my understanding, that was put in by a private developer. But they're reluctant to do it because a lot of times they can't make money. You know, so we need to help them back off some rent so they can do some of those things and make it work. And I think those are perfect for, we have, we probably have a higher demand than we realize of people that are still staying in their homes even though they're retired and their property taxes are getting upwards, being, starting to be a problem and whatnot. But if they sell it, where are they going to go? There's no place to go. So we need to provide some of that. And I think there's a couple of different things. We do it through our building planning. We do it with reduced rents. We ask our people in the local to keep working on giving some of that. The other thing we do is we have an RFP, a request for proposal that will be going out. If you read anything, you'll probably understand the doc fees that we get. That was, I know Eric does because he's in the same industry I was in. That, I don't know, two, three years ago or whenever it was, kind of goes by. The state decided when you filed a deed or you did different things, they'd add a hundred dollars to that fee. And that fee goes to the state of Washington. They hang on to it. And you can get it back. They will give it back to the counties, but it has to be for what they tell you it's going to be. It has to be pretty specific. It has to be work with affordable housing or it has to work with homelessness. And so there's all kinds of restrictions on that. That kind of stuff, it should drive everybody crazy that the state takes your money and then holds on to it and will give it back. They don't give you a hundred percent back. They have a finer speed. And then tell you what to do with it. I always say, you know, that came straight out of Mafia Handbook, that they do that. But we have this RFP out that will be going out. And it really revolves around two things. We have a situation in Calhoun's County where we have, it's hard to get true numbers for you because when you talk about homeless definition, it can, you know, it's pretty broad. But when you talk to the school districts around here, they'll tell you they have a good number of teens that are going to school but are struggling with housing issues. In Longview, they'll tell you there's over two hundred. In Kessel, I think they're approaching that two hundred. They're about one eighty, one ninety. When I asked out in my town in Castle Rock, they said there was forty-one of them. And these are kids that are, you know, living with other than their family. The ones that I want to concentrate on are the ones that are actually couch surfing, that are living in cars or don't have a place. Kessel has one kid where a classmate lets him into the house when the parents go to sleep and then gets him up before they, before they wake up. You know, and these are kids, and they're still going to school. They're going to school and trying to learn and do things. And they've had some real success stories of these kids going along and making do in life. One boy actually found his mom. And when he approached her, and I, these aren't stories that everyone endures, but these are just some of the things that they're putting up with. He found his mom and has a drug problem. And her response to him, when he walked up to her, she said, if you ever come and find me again, I'll stab you. So we have kids that are really working and trying to get somewhere. And I just think, you know, that's the kind of people you need to help. They're not people that have made decisions. They don't want to live within societal roles like we do. These are kids trying to get through school, trying to do their thing. So you'll see an RFP out was specifically to address teen housing problems. I think Frank has some, Frank Morrison from Community House has some ideas on that. And I'd be shocked if I didn't see a proposal from him. We also tried to broaden the RFPs. A lot of times they're. A lot of times they're, they're risen so the only entities that, that want to apply for them are other agencies around town. And we took out some language, we did some adjustments to try and get some private enterprise involved. You know, I, I've been a banker for thirty-nine years and I have a, a big, big belief in private enterprise. I don't think we use them, use them enough. I think we really developed some partnerships and those people get in and do things. So we tried to make it broad enough that hopefully we can get some private enterprise interest in that. We've had, I've had two different builders approach and said, you know, if I had the, the land, I would build, once said I'd build a few five-plex affordable housing units if, if I had the land and I'd keep the cost down. And another, I talked about cottage homes, kind of like that development of Incendio to help some of that. So we'll be interested to see when that actually gets out into the public, when it's out there, what, what comes back, but that's, that's a real focus. We're even looking at, you know, the county takes in tax, tax lots every so often. People don't pay their taxes, they get abandoned, we ended up with these lots. We're looking at a way to, and that's one of the things that attorneys, if we can use that to work with maybe a Habitat for Humanity and, and put a home on it, so a split equity home, those types of programs. We're trying to look to see if we can use some of those fees as a reimbursement when, when the, when the place gets built and it actually meets the, the affordable housing criteria we have, that we would refund all the permit fees for that project and pay for it there and try to get some of that back. So, you know, there's some ideas out there that we have and, and trust me on this, I'm always welcome to new, but my focus is really to get people into some home ownership. And I just think, what I tell building and planning, I said, we, we can help. I, I've, I've worked with a couple of cap hours in the past when I was running morgues and it was just for members of, of Fiber. And I go back to those neighborhoods, we did one or two, I think, in Johann Street in Castle Rock. And you go back to their neighborhoods and they're, they're still clean, they're good. I mean, these people have put some split equity, these things, and their families are growing. And, and I just think you're going to bring back, I tell them over time, you're going to get more back than what you give up at the beginning, but you got to get them into the place first, first. So those are two things for working on. We have an RFP out to try and address some teen issues and some affordable housing issues and then building and planning, we've actually made some changes over there and I think the gal running that and you and, or, yeah, Tracy is very people-oriented type of person and I'm glad to have her in that, that spot. I think she'll, she'll make a difference and, and we'll get there. But, you know, this world, it's, it's a lot different to what I come from. Things, you're moving a big ship, so it's, it's not a fast process. So other things, I, anybody have anything on your mind that they want to talk about? You want me to just ramble?
What's an RFP?
RFP is a Request for Proposal. We have these dock fees, we have roughly, I want to say around three million dollars in dock fees. And so we've put the proposal out to try and spend those, but it has to go for affordable housing or, or address homeless issues. The most visual thing that we did do with that, and, and got a lot of press on that and Baker's really no friend of mine, it was Hope Village, Hopeless Village, with the fifty units down in there. They, they wanted to come through the county for two and a half million for that. And I just, I couldn't see the sense out of it. Number one, I didn't think to address the real problem they were, they were having down there and they still haven't addressed it. And it just made no sense to spend, it's not my money, it's your money. And it made no sense for me to spend your money on something I didn't think was addressing the whole, whole problem. The biggest problem with the whole Cap Alabama was the criminal element. These people were, I mean, there was needles everywhere, there were prostitution, they were breaking into people's places, they were threatening. And I mean, one owner watched, sat on a porch and watched him break into his car and got threatened, if it even bothered him. So none of it addressed the criminal element and I just couldn't spend your money without addressing the problem. So that, that made some press and, and whatnot, but I, you know, I, I really look at it as your money, it's not my money, it's not the county's money, it's your, your money. And when we spend it, it has to be for things that I think are going to benefit the county as a whole. I think the two major things that most people ask of their governments, whether it's a city, a town, a county, whatever is, is, and I've spoken about this publicly, is number one, safety. They want to know that their kids can walk down to the park, they want their police force, they want their fire, they want that, that kind of stuff, that they know they, they can be in their community and they don't, if my child walks down the park, there's a, there's a ninety-nine, forty-nine percent chance that, that child's coming back. They don't want to have to worry about it. The other thing they want is infrastructure. They want to know that the roads are, are in good repair, that when they flush it doesn't come back at them and they turn on the water, it works. Those are the type of things that I try to concentrate on because I think that's one of the expectations when you form a government around the city or a county, that you expect from them. The rest of the time, our, our job, we swear in oath of the Constitution, if you read that, our job as a government is to protect your rights, is to make sure you have the right to do things. Our job isn't to tell you what to do, our job is to protect, protect what you do. And that's really been rastadized over, over time and we get told a lot, lot to do. So, do you have anything somebody want to know? I'll talk a little bit because I get, I get a lot of questions on this also. People ask me about grants and they're, and, and I'll, I'll touch on that because, just so you know how I look at them, to me, grants aren't free money. It's, it's, there's nothing free about it. Number one, if, if the grant, anything that comes from a grant either came out of your pocketbook now or it's going to come out of your pocketbook later, is they don't have a grant tree that, there's no free printing press. It's, if you really have that much excess money that you can do grants, then you're being taxed way too much, is what I'll tell you. So when I look at a grant, it's not that I won't take them, but it really has to fall around the two issues I, I just talked about. If we're doing an infrastructure thing for this, I mean, if they were coming in and we were replacing a bridge or we're, or doing something like that, that you saw the whole community benefit out, you know, I can, I can accept that. If you're talking about grants or just for select groups or, or individuals, I struggle with that because I don't, I don't think it's my duty to take money out of Jimmy's pocket, although I would take money from Jimmy. And, and, and give it to Woody.
I take your money from Jimmy.
I know. It's, it's just.
Woody's all for it.
Yeah. And it's not my job to take from Jimmy and give to Woody. It's not my job to take from you and give to somebody else. If you want to do that, take it out of your, your pocket and do it, you're pretty right to do that. If I want to do it, I'll do the same. So I get, people, I get blasted once in a while for my stance on grants, but the bottom line is it's your money. And my job is to spend it as wisely as I, I can. Am I perfect? No. I'm going to make mistakes, but, but that's always the goal, is to make sure whatever I spend in years, at least you can, you can see some benefit from. You, you shouldn't be able to see something, the road you're repairing, all your stuff is working there, or it just should work that way. Mr.?
So have you seen a quote-unquote perfect answer to the homeless issue? I mean, I can tell you thirty-five years ago, we were saying the same thing and...
Yeah. I, I don't, if, if I had a perfect answer, I, I'd sell and make a ton. I know, you know, take back, let's go back to Community House and Broadway's history. That goes back to the mid-eighties where there were some downtown businessmen or whatever, saw, and this is, I'm getting this story from Frank, so, saw this family living in their station wagon. He says, you know, we need to do something about that. So that was the founding of Community House on Broadway. Now, I think Frank in the time he's had is, here's the things I like about Community House. It's, they help people, but he tries real hard not to enable. He'll, he'll help people if, if they're willing to help themselves. And, and let's be honest, until people are willing to help themselves, they're not going to get help. They're just not going to do it. I, I said before as ever commissioner and I said in the, the meetings over there, I listened to more than one testimony of them coming up and saying, there, there was a gal that came from the camp, when it was Camp Alabama and was, and it wasn't that she was homeless, she had, she had support, she had a mother and she had housing available to her, but she didn't want to live by the rules. It was, I even forget her name, but it was like Suzie wants to do what Suzie wants to do and she's going to do that. So until that person is willing to make a change, you're not going to help them. She has help available, but you're not going to help them. So that's one of the things I like about Frank is, is if you come in there, you have to be on the program and he'll help you, but you have to be willing to help yourself. And I'm all for that, that's what we're supposed to do. If you have a neighbor that needs help and they're, and they're willing to make it, that's what we do. I mean, that's what we've done as a country for years and years and years. And, but I'm, I'm very much, I won't enable, just won't do it. It's, it's, it's your money and, and that's just the number of ways and, and I won't go cross that line, wherever I realize enable is probably different for every person, but if I cross over and enable, then, then it just won't happen. I won't do it. I'll stand firm.
What question? Have you been there about three months now?
Yeah.
About three months? So you probably had some conceptions of what the job was going to be. Now you've dedicated three months, what's your biggest surprise?
Yeah, yeah. But I still walk through the door. You know, here's, here's the difference. It was, other than, I'm sixty-seven years old, I didn't realize until I turned sixty-seven that I'm a neo-Nazi. I was informed of that the other day. Yeah, I, I'll have to look that up and see what I am. But the biggest difference is, you know, thirty-nine years in, in the private sector and the banking, I, I don't recall times where you just feel helpless. I, I mean, you, you run into problems and obstacles, but there always seems to be a way you can, you can work through them and get there. There's times I'll sit in that, that, that chair and, and even in this short period of time, you just go on. It's just kind of a helpless feeling. You know, one of the difficulties to deal with, and I'll give you an, an example, is government agencies breed more government agencies, okay? We have, we funded three different agencies around town to do, I forget the technical word, but they interview people and decide, help them find services. But they, so they figure out their situation and, and where they're at and then they're able to refer to services. Well, HUD and the Department of Commerce, when you get into housing issues, unless they go through one of these, you can't get anything from them. So these agencies will breed other agencies and it's just, it just never ends. You're just through this, this maze of different things. And, and it almost, at times it feels like it's almost on, on, on purpose, you know, they're, they're just trying to grow their energy. So I know that's hard to believe, Jimmy. They have, there's a lot, there's a lot of good people in the county. I, I would tell you, when you sit outside, you'll hear, you'll hear there, there is not. I, I went up to, I took the drive up to Silver Lake the other day because they're doing a develop up there and I just wanted to see the area. And, and I'd seen through the tunnel that there was people, you know, people, a lot of NIMBY stuff, not my backyard type stuff. So I said, well, it's in my, my district free, so I'll just take a drive up there and just see the area, so I'm familiar with it. So I saw these two gentlemen in the field and I stopped and I, I walked out in the field, gentleman about, about my, my age. And I introduced myself and told him what I was doing. And one guy looked at me and he goes, just so you know, we don't like the county. So, okay, that, that's good. I know, I know. And so they bit my ear for a while and, and then they realized, hey, I was only really here too, because I just want to, want to hear and know what's, what's going on. Eventually this makes it to our desk and the more I know, the better. And before it ended, I was over, he introduced me to his wife and I had a cup of coffee with her and just chatted. But that's not an unusual response. You know, there's a lot of things that, that the people in the county aren't there to help you. I can tell you that there's a lot of people in there that are willing, willing to help you. Do we have people that I, I, I call them czars, they have their little areas and they like to build power and control their little areas? Yeah, certainly we, we have those. You saw it in the private sector, but for the most part, most of the people over there are pretty good and want to help. The, the one thing, and I, and I talked to him about this, I said, you got to realize, I look at, when you show me something, what I look at is how it affects the taxpayer and is it going to make life easier for them or is it going to make things more difficult? What you look at is the RCW. And I said, I don't care about the RCW. I care about what it does to the people and I'll figure the RCW out later. So it's just a, a, kind of a different way that they look at it. They're really structured by, by law and stuff like that and they get kind of tied into, to that stuff and try and break that mold a little bit that, you know, let's, let's look at the people and then we'll figure the law out later. I mean, I've lived longer than I've seen enough leaders that don't follow the law. We got one in town today, by the way.
Good question. I live out Lexington and that retaining dam on the backside, there's, I understand they're probably that up higher. What else are they going to do? That, that beats a court retreat.
Yeah. You know, we, there's been some conversation on that and, and I would have to find out what's the next spot for that because I, I don't know where I'll camp. But I know that's, that's been a concern, building that up and it's been a concern for the property owner there, there too. I'll, I'll find out what the next step on that is for you.
So, so Phil Park is sort of growing in Lexington?
Yeah.
Is there going to be a traffic study here?
Um, no. Man, you get me on a story with, with that one. I, they did a traffic study on that. Anybody that drives through Lexington all the time, I, I live on Castle Rock, so I come the West Side Highway quite a bit. And you drive through Lexington, you see the apartments there and then the housing developments are put on the other side by, by Tim Lawn. And then you see the, the road, you're going, how's it going to handle all this? And so I, I, I felt that the traffic study, and this was before my time, was, probably should have been looked at a little closer because I don't know, you know, time, time will tell, but when those are up and running and everybody's in there, I, I have that same concern, what's going to, what's going to happen there. Yeah, I think, I think, in my opinion, I think they missed one on that. We'll see if I'm right or not as, as time goes on. Yes, sir?
Yeah, look, Old Trafford Road a little way, was there any, they just changed the gas line, put it under the river, under the creek. Is there plans to do something there or?
Not that I'm aware of, nothing's been brought up to me that they had any plans.
There was plans, I thought, to raise that road up so it wouldn't flood. We could get in and out of your property. It floods about every two or three years.
Yeah.
And there's still granite permits to keep building up there. And you're going to get a position where you can't get emergency vehicles up there. And you're... a position where you can get emergency vehicles up there, and you're going to probably soon.
I would have to ask you if there's any stuff going on, if I may talk to them. But what you bring up is a good point, Tower Road.
That's not Tower Road.
I know it, but Tower Road, when that bridge went out, that's it with no bridge there, and it reduced it to one way in for fire and medical and all that stuff, which is a concern. And they had to go all the way around. Really, there's temporary bridges there now, finally. But what held that all up is, you know, that was all built from the '80s off the dredge floes, off the ash. And before it melted, that was actually a creek that had some salmon, I quote. And then, of course, it got covered in ash, and then this big washout, when the state looked at that and said, "Well, back in 1980, whatever, there was salmon in that." So you can't do something there without going through all the rules and regs. So it took a while to get that back through, but when you see that kind of stuff, and then you don't have services, I think that's what you're getting at, is then you lose the ability to get services.
Well, no, the only way out of there is across, well, Fiber Hospital, you know, back to our house, you've got this crooked road you ride up one way, and that's a hazard in itself. And that's the only way in and out of there, unless you go clear up on top, do well, if you've got to go nap, you'll get through that.
Yeah.
Not do it.
Yeah.
Give you another problem.
Okay. All right. Well, I get, I'll tell you a humorous story, and I don't know if the public gentleman's not lying, I don't want to rattle, but I thought it was funny. One of the first calls I got was from a resident in Tim Law. And we all know that it used to be locally owned, and people always did a great job with that, and sold to a corporate unit that, I don't know, they probably have 90 of these things around the United States, right? So this guy's in one of the units, and he's calling him and me, he says, "The owners have put in edict now that all cats have to be on leash." And I go, "Okay." So, and he's a very nice gentleman, I mean, it was fun talking with him, but, you know, I just politely explained, he says, "You know, that's private, I don't know that..." I said, "It's not the county making this ordinance, right?" He goes, "No, it comes down from the landlord and just in our deal." And I said, "Well, if it's that, you can send me the information you have on it, but I think they pretty much have a right to institute that rule if they want." He says, "Yeah," and he says, "It's hard, I can't leash my cat, it's a feral cat." "It lives out underneath my hood in my vehicle." I said, "Okay." He says, "You know what, and we have pet rabbits that run around here." He said, "But my cat took care of that." I said, "Urgo the leash law." So, the point is, there's a lot of things that are important to people. This job is a very emotional and passionate job for people. There's a lot of emotion and passion, and people have strong ideas and opinions on things, and you deal with a lot of that. You had that in the private sector a little bit, people will get emotional about certain things, but you could usually work through those and start looking at facts and figures and move on. It's a different, George probably speaks to this too, but it's a different animal in public sector. There's a lot of emotion, a lot of specially, special interests and stuff that you're dealing with. It's hard sometimes to get yourself above the emotion and look at it from a logical and factual thing. Bankers, everything's got to make logic and sense, right? But sometimes that's difficult. And I get it, some things are really, really passionate and important to people, and I'll always listen to them, even though probably not always going to agree with them. It's important to listen, but I can't always agree.
Are you able to state the questions for people afterwards?
Well, I have a, we have a deal at 1:30, so probably about 1:15 at least give me time to go over there.
No, it's kind of getting to the end.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike Rick, that was very instrumental.
Rick's almost a ledger man.
Yeah.
Normal thank you for speakers is to give them a Pioneer Lions bug and a membership application, but I know that you are a member of Longview Pioneer, so I'm going to keep this to myself.
I appreciate the love. That's awesome.
Oh, if you need some recruitment, why not, it'll come. Do you like the Burden Detective Band?
Yeah.
For which year?
I'm going to talk to Tracy.
All right. See, we'll start with Marilyn, she has an announcement.
I'll wait for that, please, just hold it for a minute, Mr. Lloyd.
Okay, we have a board meeting this Thursday at 8 o'clock in the morning.
Here?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, Greg? You got announcements? Okay. Marilyn and Hal.
The Halathon. Yeah, the Halathon, that's right.
President Lloyd, Phil Lyons a guest, big shout out and thank you to Spencer for reposting about what's happening with Lyons Club International Foundation over in Turkey and Syria. I think last week, when I suggested you might be a critical time to donate to LCIA, it was before we knew that 24,000 people were killed. Now it's 35,000. I just got to tell you, that's where Lyons Club International Foundation does their best work. We were there at 911, we were down in Kalama when there was a flood, we were up in Oso, up north, we were in Boisford, now we need to be in Turkey. If you need any help or advice on how to donate, come see me.
Bob, way in the back.
Nice combat boots. I'm always giving the best time.
Ah, Phil Lyons, we're starting to sell caramel corn March 24th at Safeway. We unloaded 15 days of corn this morning, so we're all stocked up and ready to sell. So just be prepared to come to work.
Right on. Hey, you're up.
President Lloyd, Phil Lyons a guest. Just a quick word on Ron Stotler, I don't have a whole story, it sounds a little like there's more to come. So apparently he was in the hospital at PSL last week for about four days, waiting for his cardiologist, but the cardiologist was in Japan, so, there's a lot more to come. So, got a card, just thinking maybe card for long.
Terry.